Wow, that wasn't a good rendition there.
Uh, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Fields. Fields.
Here, here.
Jim. Yes, he said here.
Okay. Simpson?
Here.
Wayne?
Here.
Hazel Time?
Present.
Hefinger?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Rose?
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I move that the regular, the minutes of the regular meeting of November twenty-third, twenty-twenty is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes of November twenty-third? The clerk, please call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Uh, reports of standing committees, the finance committee met prior to this evening's council meeting. Uh, this was our last finance meeting of the year. We will meet again at the beginning of twenty-twenty-one and hopefully twenty-twenty-one will be better than twenty-twenty. Health safety and sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no, uh, report tonight, although I would like to schedule a meeting, uh, sometime in mid or late January, uh, just to get an update of what the plans are for the upcoming year from, from police, fire and sanitation. Thank you.
Thank you, public property, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, special legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have no report, but I am going to schedule and re- actually reschedule a special legislation meeting sometime early in January.
Thank you, streets and sidewalks, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, water and utilities, Mrs. Hazel Time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, nothing new here and no meetings scheduled.
Thank you, and emerging technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you, requests for council action. We have several for the finance committee. We have twenty-two forty-seven budget amendments, twenty-two forty-eight advance request, twenty-two forty-nine amend ordinance one ninety-six twenty pertaining to the CARES Act funds, twenty-two fifty, amend code one thirty-three oh one association membership for the fire department, twenty-two fifty-one change vendor from Otte Enterprises to Trumbull Industries for the water, twenty-two fifty-two expenditure over twenty-five thousand jet A fuel, twenty-two fifty-three amendment, men agreement with Montville Township for fire services for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-two fifty-four agreement with Medina Township for fire services twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-fifty-two fifty-five state bid purchase of a twenty-twenty dollars journey for the building department, twenty-two fifty-six state bid purchase of a twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer for the police department, and twenty-two fifty-seven, uh, waived December twenty-twenty utility bill, uh, penalties. Reports of municipal officers? Well, we have Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The COVID-nineteen Medina County remains in the purple level. Uh, we're asking folks to remain vigil- vigilant in avoiding large gatherings, wearing masks in public, washing hands frequently and social distancing. Updated information on business openings, safety protocol, et cetera, are on the city and the Medina County Health Department websites. There's a recent health advisory from Medina County Health Director Krista Wasowski, and she's asking county residents to remain at home as frequently as possible to assist and curtail the rapid spread of the COVID of late. We, in, in our update today with, with Krista, uh, she said the, uh, the, the rate in, in December is over a hundred and thirty cases, uh, that we're seeing, uh, a day. And, um, they're, they're doing their best to try to curtail that. Remain in homes per the public health advisory from ten PM to five AM. Uh, that's, that's through the end of the year now. And employment, healthcare, caring for others or pets, groceries or other essentials are permitted exceptions. Uh, fiber to the home, uh, encouraging residents to take the survey at the link www dot Medina dot L I T communities altogether dot net. And, um, what this could open up to the city is running, uh, fiber links, uh, to individual homes and then, uh, multiple vendors could get on the Medina County fiber and create a, a great deal of competition then in, instead of, um, just, just what we have, uh, today without the fiber. The city of Medina, uh, received a healthy worksite award, uh, this year. It was a twenty-twenty healthy worksite platinum level. We got a gold level last year, and this is, uh, given by the Healthy Business Council of Ohio. And I'd just like to compliment the staff on, on their efforts with the wellness and, um, continuing to set a positive example. Uh, we were one of, uh, uh, only a, a few in, in the, uh, state that reached this platinum level. Uh, Chief Painter is here. I'd like to thank him for his, uh, service to Medina as well as the residents of Northern Ohio, uh, before he came to Medina, and we're all wishing you good health and enjoyment on your retirement, chief. Uh, I'd like to, uh, mention that Kathy Clerk, or Kathy Patton is here today, our council clerk, uh, working on her birthday. Uh, we appreciate that, Kathy. And last but not least, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all. I pray all stay safe and healthy this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a number of items on the agenda that came from finance. I'll address those when we get there.
Thank you, Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but it's been a, a pleasure to work out here at Medina. I thank everybody involved.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Land Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. I think there is Mr. Woerther, Parks and Recreation Director?
He is not, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McCully, Service Director?
I just want to wish Chief Painter, uh, well in his retirement, and it was good working with him all these years. Good luck to you, chief.
Uh, Chief, any police departments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to wish Chief Painter good luck in his retirement. Appreciate it, all the collaboration for the many years we've worked together here at the fire department and the police department. You definitely left your mark. Legacy will continue on throughout the, uh, the future of that department. You definitely left your mark and the, the collaboration and the training that the officers have gotten from you and your staff will, will definitely benefit the city for, for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo everyone's thoughts about Chief Painter. Uh, chief, it's been great working with you. We'll definitely miss you and enjoy the future. I do want to notify everybody about the West Smith Road Reconstruction Project. Uh, even though it's two years away, because, uh, so much of the funding's coming from federal funds, in order to meet certain guidelines, uh, we have to advise the residents here in the next couple of weeks about the planned, uh, traffic maintenance, a traffic plan. Uh, I asked everyone to review it and offer any comments necessary. Uh, but please know that the project's not starting next spring. It's, uh, twenty-twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that I missed? Cause I can't see everybody there. I don't think so. Nope. Okay, we have confirmation of mayoral, mayoral appointments, um, on Exhibit A attached to agenda. I'm not going to read them all, but they deal with the Board of Building Code Appeals, Historic Preservation Board, Borders Zoning Appeals, Planning and Zoning Commission, Cemetery Commission, Economic Development Committee, Records Commission, Shade Tree Commission, Uptown Park Advisory Committee, and the Twenty-Twenty-One Chartering Review Commission.
Move to confirm the mayoral appointments.
Any discussion? Any? Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the mayor's appointments? Uh, please call the roll on the adoption or confirmation of the mayor's appointments.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes. Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notices, communications, petitions, there are none. Unfinished business, there's none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public, we've been jactering to speak in any issue concern which pertains to the city during the person of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments are redirected to the chair. In a reasonable time limit, approximately five minutes will be imposed as there's a group. Please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach, I guess, I don't know what microphone it is, the center microphone or on the video screen, uh, and say their name and address circuit of the minutes. Members of the public will afford the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time, either in person or on, um, video? Do we have any from Facebook? Kathy, do we know, or Jared, anybody?
Yes, are you around?
Nope, okay, good. So we have introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We, uh, like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Resolution two-ten-twenty, ordinance two-eleven-twenty, ordinance two-twelve-twenty, ordinance two-thirteen-twenty, ordinance two-fourteen-twenty, ordinance two-fifteen-twenty, resolution two-sixteen-twenty, ordinance two-seventeen-twenty, resolution two-eighteen-twenty, ordinance two-nineteen-twenty, resolution twenty-twenty-twenty, and ordinance two-twenty-one-twenty.
I, I, I will make a motion to, and the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second. Any discussion on suspending the rules of three readings? Please call the roll on suspending the rules of three readings.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes, yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
We have a resolution two-ten-twenty, a redirecting to, I believe the mayor has the resolution with him. Um, this is a resolution commending Robert Painter for his dedicated years of service as a fire chief. It says, whereas Robert Painter has been employed with the city of Medina for over thirteen years as fire chief for the city of Medina, and the Medina City Council and the mayor wish to express their gratitude and appreciation of Chief Painter for his dedicated years of public service to the city of Medina and the community. And now therefore being resolved by the city, the council of Medina, Ohio, that Medina City Council and the mayor hereby commend Robert Painter for his thirteen years of dedicated public service as fire chief for the city of Medina. And Medina City Council and the mayor hereby extend their sincere thanks and appreciation to Robert Painter for his commitment to the city and community and wishes him health, success and prosperity in his retirement. That assigned copy of this resolution shall be extended to Robert Painter in recognition of his dedicated service. That this resolution shall be in full force effective at the earliest period allowed by law. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
It's my honor to make this motion unto half of Chief Painter.
Second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Resolution two-ten dash twenty.
Chief, congratulations. You have to give the ads for us. I know this is not in person, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to air your reading.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been an honor to work for the, the city here and to serve the citizens of Medina, Mountville Township, Medina Township. I, uh, really appreciate the support I've had through council through the years and the leadership and guidance from Mayor Hanwell, and then, of course, the day-to-day operations with all my fellow department heads. It wouldn't, wouldn't be possible without them. It's been a great move for my family, and I couldn't ask for a better way to end my career. I really appreciate it. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Congratulations on your retirement. Hopefully you have a great retirement. Okay, our ordinance two-eleven-twenty, we have an ordinance authorizing the increase of expenditure to main street lighting for the street department.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. McCully?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we've been replacing the street luminaires for several years in the historic district, as council's aware. Uh, this year in twenty-twenty, the street crews replaced approximately twenty, uh, fourteen in number. Uh, there's an additional, um, room in the state capital grant for six lights. So we're asking to increase this ordinance to thirty thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars. Um, the, uh, state capital grant is, will cover sixty-six percent, and the city will be obligated for one-third to thirty-three percent.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Ordinance two-eleven dash twenty passes seven zero.
Ordinance two-twelve-twenty, an order establishing a Medina Square Christmas Lighting Fund, number one forty-one.
Move to approve.
Second. Mr. Durham, this is a great fund. Tell us about it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is near and dear to your heart. We have a, uh, significant contribution, we believe, to be, uh, coming very soon, and we need a fund to place it in, and this will cover the, uh, the purpose here for the, the lighting.
Thank you. I know Mr. McCully loves this fund too, so.
My favorite.
Any, uh, further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance two-twelve dash twenty passes seven zero.
Ordinance two-thirteen-twenty, an ordinance amending section G to section thirty-one oh four, this is always a benefits code of the city of Medina, Ohio, relative to special regulations pertaining to the Parks Director.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mayor, is this you?
Yes, sir. Sir. So the, um, rec director resigned from the city a short time ago, and we're looking at the management structure of the rec center, especially during this COVID period, and rather than replace the actual rec director, we've asked our Parks Director to take over the leadership role of overseeing that. And in fairness to him, uh, respectfully requesting the council to permit him to be paid, uh, an extra four hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-four cents bi-weekly in addition to his salary as the Parks Director. Uh, this will compensate him for the extra duties and responsibilities and, um, hours and oversight that, that this addition will take. We're also respectfully asking that it be effective November ninth, twenty-twenty, as that's when he assumes these duties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Fields?
Yes, yes.
Fields?
I, I don't know if the mic, is the mic working in the, uh, in the room?
Yeah, we're having a hard time hearing Kathy, though.
Oh, okay.
Fields?
Yes.
Jim Shields?
Yes. Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ordinance two-thirteen dash twenty passes seven zero.
Ordinance two-fourteen-twenty, an ordinance amending ordinance number one eighty-seven nineteen, pass November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, amendments to the twenty-twenty budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a slew of these this time. It's the end of the year, so we have, uh, things to, to cover where we've got negatives, but we also have the CARES Act this year, and that's what most of these are.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Ordinance two-fourteen dash twenty passes seven zero.
Ordinance two-fifteen, Wayne, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Advances are loaned from one fund to another. So we're loaning money from the general fund to these funds. It'll be repaid when those, uh, other funds have the appropriate monies to do so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance two-fifteen dash twenty passes seven zero.
Resolution two-sixteen-twenty will be removed from the agenda. We've just learned today from Representative Hamley that the clerk of court, uh, municipal clerk of court, being appointed rather than elected, uh, will not go through committee, uh, has been removed from the bill. So there's no need to support something that won't be voted on. Mayor, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir. I concur.
All right, so that resolution is removed because it no longer has any effect on voting on it. Ordinance two-seventeen-twenty, an ordinance to make appropriations for the current expense and other expenditures of the city of Medina, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last step of the budget process, and then in a couple of weeks, we'll start on another one.
Oh, I love that. So this is the twenty-twenty-one budget, just so everybody knows, and, uh, not to bring up some sore points, but we did cut the budget for twenty-twenty-one, ten percent, uh, across the board, uh, just to prepare for, uh, potential, uh, slowdown in the collections of income tax. We did receive some CARES Act money, which is going to help the city tremendously, and hopefully the twenty-twenty-one income tax collection will continue to be strong, and we will not, uh, lose too much money. But if we do, we are prepared, and I appreciate all the help from both all the other council members and department heads and, uh, the mayor for, uh, working with us all together to make sure that we remain fiscally strong as a city. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel?
Yes.
Ordinance two-seventeen dash twenty passes seven zero.
Resolution two-eighteen-twenty, resolution adopting a five-year budget for the city of Medina, Ohio for the period beginning January first, twenty-twenty-one, and, uh, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This goes hand in hand with the budget. It's the plan for the additional four years beyond twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on this resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel? Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Resolution two-eighteen, there's twenty passes seven zero.
Ordinance two-nineteen-twenty, an ordinance amending ordinance number one ninety-six-twenty pass November ninth, twenty-twenty, sections one, two, four, relative to the use of CARES Act funds to cover certain payroll costs, unemployment compensation and legal expenditures.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause. Discussion on the emergency clause, any ordinance, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the CARES Act, uh, monies that we talked about before. Um, the emergency clause is because this money has to be spent by the end of twenty-twenty, so we have to have all the i's dotted and t's crossed by the end of this year.
Any further questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Fields? Fields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance two-nineteen dash twenty passes seven zero.
We have resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty. This is a resolution, and I'll just read it. I know Nancy's not there, but this is a resolution defending Nancy Abbott for her dedicated years of service as clerk of courts for the city of Medina. Whereas Nancy Abbott has been employed with the city of Medina for thirteen years as clerk of courts for the city of Medina, and the Medina City Council and the mayor wish to express their gratitude and appreciation to Nancy Abbott for her dedicated years of public service to the city of Medina and the community. And now therefore being resolved that the council of the city of Medina, Ohio, that Medina City Council and the mayor hereby commend Nancy Abbott for her thirteen years of dedicated public service as clerk of courts for the city of Medina, that the Medina City Council and the mayor hereby extend their sincere thanks and appreciation to Nancy Abbott for her commitment to the city and the community, and wishes her the health, success and prosperity in her retirement, that assigned copy of this resolution shall her retirement, and the signed copies resolutions will be presented to Nancy Abbott in recognition of her years of dedicated service, and that this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Moved to approve the resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffender.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Fields. Resolution two twenty dash twenty passes seven zero.
Ordinance two twenty-one dash twenty, an ordinance amending Section 91706 of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio, by repealing Section 91706B and waiving utility bill penalties for the month of December 2020.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause. Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we're asking to do here is to waive the utility penalties for the month of December. The reason for this request is that, as you've seen in the news and so on, the post office is way behind right now, and a lot of our customers have not received their bills or are just now receiving their bills. Ordinarily, they'd be due in a week, and people aren't going to have time to get them paid, so we just like to waive the penalties for this month, and hopefully, the post office will get it straightened out by next month. Oh, and the emergency clause is because it's this month's penalties.
Correct. Thank you. I know there's just been issues with it, and a lot of us. Hopefully, they'll come soon to those who are waiting for them in the mail. Is there any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffender.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Wayne.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffender.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Ordinance two twenty-one dash twenty passes seven zero.
I want to apologize in my haste going through the municipal courts. I forgot Mrs. Marshall, the Economic Development Director, because she was hidden behind my other screen. So, Mrs. Marshall, do you have anything to add for the Economic Development Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening, but I did want to congratulate Painter on his retirement. The best wishes to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments, I just want to have one wishing both Kathy Patton and Mayor Dennis Hanwell happy birthday. It only comes once a year. Just remember that. So, happy birthday to both of you. Any other council comments? Mr. Simpson, I'll go around the room there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll echo what you said. Happy birthday to Kathy and to Mayor Hanwell. Chief Painter, thank you for your dedicated years of service. It was a pleasure working with you all these years, and I wish you best of luck in your future endeavors. It was a great article in the Medina Weekly to see what your passions were after retirement, and I'm sure you and your wife and your son will have a great time photographing a lot of things around this country. So, again, best to health and prosperity. I wish everybody a happy New Year and a Merry Christmas. I know it's going to be difficult because none of us are going to be able to get together with our families and friends like we normally do, but it sounds like today, the first doses of the vaccines for the virus has gone out, and hopefully, next year or this time, we'll all be able to celebrate these holidays as we have in the past. The only other thing I want to mention is there's the last, well, since the election in November, there has been a lot of controversy on both sides of the aisle with the results of this election. I know today, the Electoral College announced that President-elect Biden has won that, so I congratulate him. I thank Donald Trump for his service. I just wish that, speaking nationally here more than state, obviously not our local elected offices, but I wish that for the betterment of the country, that we could all work together or they could all work together, especially now, there's so much relief needed during this pandemic, and the state and local levels can only do so much without the federal government's help. So, I wish everybody the best of health and a happy New Year. We probably won't be talking to you before then, and remember, stay kind, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heffender.
As usual, I have my little list here of what I want to talk about, and Councilman Simpson stole every single talking point that I had, so I'm just going to echo him. Congratulations, Chief Painter. You deserve the retirement, and for your service. Happy birthday, Kathy. Happy birthday, Mayor. And he's 100% right in everything we're talking about. This has been a contentious year. It's been a difficult year. It's been the most difficult years nationally, statewide and locally, we've had, and we all need to be in it together, because remember, we're not fighting each other. We're fighting a virus, and nothing, no matter what plan you think you have, nothing will be back to normal until we get this virus under control, unfortunately. So, take care of each other. We need to be kind, as Councilman Simpson has continuously reminded us, and we need to work together to make the place better. And, you know, constantly throughout this year, there's been a lot of contentious moments. There's been a lot of people in the community that have been very upset, and sometimes they say things like, "I would never agree with you on this because we're on different sides," but there are a lot of us even on this council and City Hall that disagree quite a bit, and still, when we actually get to the votes and what we're doing, it's still probably on one or two hands that I can count the times that we actually vote opposite of each other, because for the most part, we agree that this city is a beautiful place that we can work together to make a better place for everybody. We have different ways of doing that. We have different ideas, and we are more than welcome to hash those out, but it's all about being respectful and kind, because we all have the end goal is the same for all of us. So, as we go into 2021, I hope we really take Councilman Simpson's words to heart, and, you know, we can make this a better place when this virus is over. Thank you. America.
Mrs. Heffertine?
Well, you know, I was only third up this time, and they still said a bunch of stuff that I wanted to say, so I'm just going in the interest of time, because I talk a lot. Thank you to all those people. Happy birthday, all of the wonderful well wishes, whatever they said, I'm saying it too. But I think it's fair to say that my first year on council, I really had a trial by fire. It's been a heck of a year, but I wanted to say that thank you so much to everyone, not just everyone on council, but everyone in our local government. Each one of you truly has helped me and formed me and shaped me in your own way into being a better leader, and just like Councilman Heffender just said, you know, we disagree, and I'm ready to come in guns blazing and do something, and each one of you has really shaped how I, you know, have grown as a leader this past year, and I really, truly appreciate all the time that all of you have taken to talk to me, to explain things to me. I'm definitely looking forward. Hopefully, I've served my residents well, and I hope to do so again in '21 and as long as you'll have me. But truly, this has been the best experience and the worst year, but I want to thank everyone who has worked with me this year, and especially, you know, the residents of Medina, because I got into this because I wanted to help you, and not only did you let me know that I was in it for all the right reasons, but all of my coworkers did the same as well, and it's just been, despite everything that's happened this year, one of the best growing experiences for me because of the residents and because of everyone else in our local government. I like to wish everyone a happy holidays, whichever holiday you celebrate. You know, I'm all lovey-dovey inclusive, so anything that you do during this Yule season, celebrate it, be kind to each other, all of those wonderful things that my colleagues have said. I'll probably think of something else, and then someone else will say it, but, you know, thank you, everyone. It's been, despite, like I said, all of these horrible things, it's been a great year in a lot of ways, and I choose to concentrate on that, and I'm very thankful for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb, you're next on the list.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, Chief. And I wish you well. Mayor Hanwell, happy birthday. Kathy, happy birthday, for the third time today, I think. Happy birthday. And to the administration, thank you for your work all year. My colleagues on council, it has been a pleasure to work with you. We've accomplished a lot in difficult times, and I am proud to be part of this seven-member group. And to the community in general, I wish you all a happy, healthy, and a blessed holiday. Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Chief Painter, congratulations. Welcome to the retirement world. You will enjoy it. Just relax and do what you want to do. I've fixed you for the entire time I've been on council. I learned quite a bit from you, and thank you very much for everything you've taught me and the patience you showed while I was trying to learn. So, thank you, and best of luck to you. Kathy, happy birthday. I know it's what, the 29th birthday again? Okay, good. And Mayor, it's the 30th birthday again, right? Happy birthday to you, too. One thing, in this Christmas time, I'd like everybody to stop and reflect on what Eric said and what Denny said about being kind to each other and working together as a community. We have a situation with this COVID thing where we're allowed to do things at a national level, but we're not allowed to do things at a local level. So, what I'm going to ask people to do is, instead of going out and buying presents that have licensed professional sports things on them and giving more money to those high-priced people up north, keep the money locally. Spend the money locally at your local businesses, buy the local crafts, buy the local products that we have here in Medina, and remember that it's the local businesses that are going to keep us going. They're the ones who are going to fund the baseball teams, the soccer teams, and all the local kids' sports. Forget about those high-priced privileged people up north. And help us all. This will help us move forward, help us come together as a community. Thank you for the editorialization. And one little bit of fun fact here. My parents built a house in 1966 in western Pennsylvania. They put a Luxair furnace in it. They finally decided to replace it in October, and so I'm looking at the nameplate. It was made at Henry Furnace Company in Medina, Ohio. So, my family's been supporting Medina for years that I didn't even know it, so just a little bit of a fun fact here. And lastly, but most importantly, Merry Christmas to everyone in the city, and may 2021 be our best year ever. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm still on. My mic says it's muted, but can you hear me still?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yeah, I'll be quick. Birthday wishes to Kathy and the mayor. Retirement best wishes to Nancy as clerk and Chief Painter. Chief Painter, we've really been lucky. We've always had great leadership at the fire department, and you continued that tradition, so I thank you, and I hope we find somebody just as good to take your place, but we will miss you. Thank you. Happy holiday wishes, Merry Christmas to everybody, and then I want to keep this short because I know the mayor and Nino want to get home and watch the Browns tonight and cheer them on, so that's my gift to Nino and the mayor.
I think Mr. Patton wants to do that. Mr. Pacoli, you know, maybe he's changing over, I think, but I'm not sure. But I want to wish everybody.
So is Patton.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year again.